Kyle Gaimerath, thank you for joining us today in the studio. It's always a pleasure to just sit down with you and talk to you with you about what's happening in city council, what's happening in our community. So thank you and welcome and welcome again.
Eric Lindemuth, I appreciate the opportunity, always a pleasure on this end as well. And yeah, excited for another rousing discussion.
So before we get into what happens, what is what's been happening lately? Maybe talk to us about your about your about your life, you know, what does that look like? What is a day to day person of a city councilman look like? And what would people be most surprised to know about your day to day on city council?
It definitely ebbs and flows. So this week, for instance, the third week of the month is my most bored heavy week. So we have our meetings, obviously, on Tuesday. Today I have a metro animal shelter task force. It's every third Wednesday tomorrow. I have a Casper Housing Authority Board meeting. It's every third Thursday. And then I'm actually on a panel for Casper Young Professionals is having a evening function Thursday this week. And so I'll be joining and answering some questions for that group as well. So that's a little bit heavier than most weeks. Usually I have one or two commitments, but usually on like the third week of the month, I have three or four typically. So yeah, as far as kind of what the regular day to day is, I guess the thing that would surprise most people is I actually, we actually don't hear from that many people about what's like. Facebook provides quite a deal of commentary, but as far as like our email and phone calls and the people that we see in meetings, I mean, more often than not, we do have one citizen that shows up to almost every single meeting. So props to them for their diligence in that regard, but usually we're speaking to a mostly empty room. With a couple city staff members in there and again, the emails and the phone calls, especially the phone calls, just don't really happen. So I think most people would be surprised that while online on Facebook primarily, it looks like there's a lot of chatter and I do try to follow that. As far as direct communications to us, it's pretty minimal, a lot less than I was expecting, and I think a lot less than most people would expect.
So that one city or that one, that one resident that shows up to every meeting, is that the one that that has always has something to say? Or is it someone that's actually listening and trying to understand?
Well, I mean, I think he listens and I think tries to understand, but he speaks at almost every meeting as well. So yeah, we get to hear from him often, last night included.
All right. I think I can, I can, I can guess who that person is.
I think you'd probably nail it, yeah.
So if you weren't on city council, what's community focused activity would you most likely gravitate, gravitate toward?
Honestly, the thing I would, the thing I wish I had more capacity for, that I would love to do more, that I feel like my service on council kind of prohibits me from doing is just. As lame as it probably sounds, I'd probably be like a digital creator of sorts or using, you know, I'd like to think I'm pretty social, you know, savvy on social media. And so one of the things I would love to do is just create more content highlighting local businesses, you know, have all these grand ideas. I would love to have a 360 degree camera and document our whole trail system. I would love to live stream the parades and functions at David Street. I would love to create social media content for local businesses, just with things that are trending and just kind of, you know, give it to them and say like, hey, I was, I was getting a coffee at your shop today and took some video and had the time to edit it. And feel free to use it on, you know, I'm going to post it because I think it's silly or funny or good content, but feel free to use it. I would love to do more of that and I just don't have the capacity, but I do want every once in a while. But if I had a lot more free time on my hands, I'd probably do a lot more of that.
Doesn't take much, just grab your, grab your cell phone and do a couple of minutes. And I mean, that's what this thing turned into is, you know, I didn't know what was going to happen, you know, a year and a half ago. And I thought I'd sit down with, it was Dave from Copper Cup Coffee was the first one I sat down with. And now a year and a half later, we're having some serious discussions with Dave and with other people like yourself about what's happening in our town. So you never know what, what can morph out of a crazy ideas. So.
Yeah, I got a ton of footage on my phone. I just, nobody ever sees it, never sees the lights a day because I always get held up with the editing and the production. I just, I don't, I like filming, I like shooting the video, getting the content, putting it together, editing it. I really don't like that. And so, yeah, when I'm pressed for time, it's just one of those things I think about, I'm like, uh, no, I'd rather, you know, respond to these emails that I've left in draft or something like that.
We're definitely, you know, you're definitely very active. I mean, from my point of view on, on social media, trying to correct the narrative or at least share your opinion, give, give people more of a balanced approach of what's, what's happening in our community. So it's, it's a vital role because not everyone is on social media doing what you do. So it's, it's important. I think it's important.
Thanks. I appreciate it. You know, when I started on council, I was doing some video stuff and I found some limited success with it. And just over time, when I came on council, it was right after COVID. And so I was working from home and it just felt like I had a lot more free time. I was, you know, spending less time traveling to and from work and probably a variety of things, but it felt like I had more time. So I was doing more of that stuff and it just fell off over time, the more commitments I, you know, you'd think it'd get easier over time, but actually it feels like I get more and more strapped, you know?
With time?
Yeah, it doesn't feel like things get more efficient. It feels like I just add to my list of obligations. So.
That's the passion coming through for you. You obviously have, have that for our community, which is, which is great.
It's really hard for me to step back and not, you know, to step off of a board, knowing that I'm missing all this great knowledge being shared in the, you know, I love playing matchmaker in the community. I love connecting dots and making sure the right people know each other. And so it, it's hard for me to pull back and not read the local news. You know, I went camping up at the Big Horns with my family a couple of weekends ago. And on one hand, not having any internet for two or three days was amazing. Getting away from the noise and all the constant notifications and everything, it was amazing. But then when I came back, the very first thing I wanted to do was catch up on all the local news stories that I'd missed out on. So it's hard, but.
Yeah, detoxing is obviously super important, especially when in your space where you're always trying to correct the narrative or trying to set the record straight or, 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 you know, just provide that, that input. But it can be toxic sometimes. I mean, that's when I read what you are, what you are dealing with, it's some of their comments, like what recently happened, I don't know if we're going to get into it, but what would happen with the change in leadership at the higher level with the Carter and Napier? The comments that just showed up that the very first day was like, oh my goodness, where does this information even come from? I mean, is it, is it, is it truly disinformation or is it just people spouting off random thoughts that they should keep to themselves? It's just, you know, you wonder where this stuff comes from. Then I asked a reliable source, is any, is any of this, could any of this be true? And he's like, no, not at all. He doesn't make this much money and this or this, or all of these random thoughts that people shout out that they're, it's just, it's a very toxic, toxic environment.
Unfortunately, that is the case. Yeah. In regards to our city manager who we are losing, he starts in Spring Hill, Tennessee on August 20th. We're probably, we got him for a few more weeks. Yeah. Seeing that commentary, I could tell immediately who the people were that had met him and had never met him because some of those judgments I saw cast, I'm like, you, you have clearly never met this man. That's so out of pocket and out of character.
Right. Because he's an amazing person. I've been in a couple of meetings with them and talked to him a few times and he's just the nicest guy. And, and I think he's one of those city officials that really puts his heart into it.
Yeah.
It's not just a job for him.
Oh, he cares.
Yeah, hundred percent.
Yep. And yeah, like you said, he's a great man. I got a ton of respect for him. He's, he's absolutely a role model for me.
Speaking of role models, who, who has been your biggest role model or, or person that has inspired you the most in civic leadership?
I mean, the easy, the easy one is my dad. He obviously hasn't been around since I've been, you know, on city council or I hadn't even been on a single board before he passed back in 2016. But he was the one that set the example for me. He, I grew up watching him serve his community through a variety, you know, emceeing nonprofit fundraisers or being a part of the wild Lotto board. And, you know, taking on other duties assigned by governors and past folks. He had ran for office originally for John Barrasso's senate seat. Barrasso ended up beating him out, but he had ran for that seat initially 20 odd years ago. And so he definitely set the example for me. He instilled in me this concept that, you know, public service and serving your community is a noble and, you know, just a noble way to spend your time. And so, yeah, like growing up, he was absolutely my role model. And I would say it's definitely the thing I yearn for the most from him is having, being able to tap into that knowledge and tap into, I just respected his opinion so much. There's always times, especially on council, when I'm torn about, you know, a controversial decision we have to make or I'm straddling the fence about something and I wish I had that sounding board still. That's definitely the thing I struggle with the most. But then since 2016, you know, it's been almost nine years since I've lost him, we've lost him. There's been a couple of different people, honestly, though, Carter is, he's got much of the same temperament my dad did, very knowledgeable. Carter, yeah, Carter's great and I've absolutely, my six years on council, looked to him for insight, perspective and to help me. Kind of fully flesh out my own opinions and develop as a person.
What's the best piece of advice that you, that you receive either from Carter or your father or, you know, someone about city council?
I don't know if it's one single piece of advice, although I've certainly gotten a lot of great advice over the years. I would say, so I'm a huge fan of Stoicism. I don't know how familiar you are with Stoicism as kind of a philosophy. It's kind of what I use as my guiding compass in life and Stoicism, among many things, really emphasizes four key virtues and it's justice, wisdom, temperance and. Justice, temperance, wisdom and oh gosh, what's the other one? I can't think of it. Anyways, where I'm going with that is temperance is really, it's something my dad. Always emphasized and illustrated, and it's something that I think Carter is amazing at. And it's just ratcheting back your emotional reaction to things, looking at things through an objective lens and just trying to, you know, be as analytical as possible. And so I've really appreciated having those role models in my lives to display that because it's something that I'm always trying harder to instill in myself is just that reduced reactivity to things. You know, not jumping to conclusions at first impressions, but just receiving things in a very objective manner, trying to remove my emotion from it and just analyzing it. And just deciding what is the most reasonable position to take on this. So yeah, that's something that I've, there's not many people out there, especially these days in this hyper polarized, impulsive kind of world we live in. There's not a lot of people that I feel like are displaying or illustrating temperance in a very strong way. And so I definitely appreciate those two people in my life, providing that example for me.
Thanks for watching today. These podcasts are powered by PayRock and PayRock is a payment solutions provider. We work with any size business or nonprofit, improving those payment acceptance efficiencies while reducing those overall costs. You can get ahold of me through any one of those social media channels or you can give me a call. Let's get back to that podcast. It's definitely a strength to be able to step back because there's a lot of noise going on and to take a step back and, and, and look at things as objectively as possible and be able to make those decisions that are often tough. And knowing that you're not going to get it right all the time and, and we're, we're as, 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 you know, being involved in, in, in the city, we need to get it right as much as possible, but we're not going to get it right all the time.
Sure.
But I think we'll make less mistakes if we do step back, if we do try to take not, you know, to filter through all that, that noise. A lot of times people think that their, their voice isn't heard in all this noise and it's just a lot of chaos sometimes, especially when you're on social media. Can you give us an example of when someone's voice was actually heard in an actual, you know, decision that was made and that was worth either, either their, their input? Or actually they spoke up at a city council meeting that really shifted the tide of something?
Yeah. I can't think of anything that was like transformative for the community, but those things are hard to achieve and they always require, you know, task forces, time, effort, lots of money. I actually, the most satisfaction I get out of my service on council is the small ones, the little stuff. So for instance, the gentleman that we referred to earlier that shows up to nearly every council meeting, speaks almost at every council meeting. He brought forth a suggestion, he lives in the area of Kaufman Street. I used to live on Kaufman Avenue over on the, you know, sort of westish side of town, west, south kind of side of town. And he mentioned the fact that Kaufman Street between, I think it's 21st and like CY is very windy. There's a lot of blind turns and very few places to park. And so it was, people would speed through there and it was unsafe. And so he mentioned it at a meeting, we did a traffic study within a week. And then I think within a week or two after that, we had new signs installed that are encouraging people to slow down, watch for pedestrians and stuff. And so I can think of a ton of examples of those sorts of things in my neighborhood and the riverwest subdivision on the west side of town. I live in an area where there's multiple right angle turns and for one reason or another, probably because that used to be county, a county developed area of town that was annexed by the city in like the late eighties. They just didn't have the same development standards, but there were no stop signs at any of those right angled intersections. And so I had multiple neighbors approach me and say, hey, you know, there's a lot of kids in our neighborhood. Technically, these cars don't have to stop here. They can just make this, you know, pretty quick sweeping turn. And so they asked for stop signs and we got stop, stop signs installed at those two intersections. A huge win, you know, I don't want to stroke my own ego or anything, but a huge win, honestly, one of the biggest wins for me my whole time on council, one of the things I'm most proud of is at the corner of Trevette and Robertson, there's now turning lanes. To get off a Trevette onto Robertson, but also to get off a Robertson onto, it's not Ash. But there's turning lanes now, whereas historically, if somebody needed a turn off Trevette onto Robertson Road, sometimes the line would get held up for like 20, 25 cars. There was a ton of congestion. And then also if you're on Robertson trying to get onto Trevette, people would not wait for you to turn. They'd blow right by you and almost sideswipe you at like 30, 35 miles an hour. And so I did hear from some folks about the lack of safety and I had brought up the idea of like, hey, can restriping that road should be simple enough. Can we do that? And it was done within a couple of weeks and they just went out and did, restripped it again because the paint had kind of worn off. And that to me, because I noticed that, me and the people in my neighborhood, that's something every single day, we're kind of reaping the benefit of always shaving off a few seconds or a minute or two. And, you know, I've probably captured an hour of my life back just from the addition of those turn lanes at this point. So yeah, I get a lot of satisfaction in those really small wins and those things, installation of a stop sign, restriping the street, they're easy. I mean, we can, the city's nimble enough, we can pull that stuff off with relative ease. It's the big stuff that, you know, the creation of a new business development park or, you know, the big stuff takes a while. The wheels of bureaucracy take a while to turn and you got to get multiple levels of approval, find the funding sources and stuff. But the little stuff, the city is quick and nimble in that regard. And I get a lot of satisfaction out of this because that's a tangible result. A lot of the stuff we talk about is big, it's intangible, you don't ever see the resolution of it. It's just a continuing conversation that occurs over time. I like the small stuff that you can point to and say, hey, like we did that or you brought that up and we got that done.
I think you have a story about that almost every time that you come on, on, on the podcast. I remember the last one you mentioned, something about the traffic patterns with lights and there was, I forget the exact story, we can go back and so if you haven't heard the other podcast.
There's some other great ones.
Right. But there's, you have another story with the same thing, with the, the time it took. And so you, you suggested to adjust the traffic patterns and it sounds like if you, if you would bring up a true safety concern like on Robertson Road, then they're quick to, quick to move. So that's, that's good, that's good to hear.
Yeah. And especially if it's only a couple thousand buck, you know, a couple thousands, way easier to come up with than a couple million. Those are two totally different conversations.
For sure, for sure. And there's definitely larger ones out there that take more time and that's what gets a lot of people, you know, riled up on, online. And one of those is the, is the property taxes issue. It sounds great, you know, on the, on the, on the outside. I'd love to pay less, less taxes of all taxes in general. But, and you know, if you look at it objectively, if there's, if they're going to lower taxes in one area, there's probably going to be trade offs in, in those trade offs are things that we enjoy. Whether it's, you know, end of the year festivities or whether it's parks and things like that. Can you just maybe for, for people that are not aware of where we're at today, tell us where we're at in terms of the property tax reduction bill? And then what, what are the potential outcomes of that?
Sure. So yeah, folks that follow the legislature might remember that this last legislative session, they had passed a 25% property tax cut on all residential property up to a million dollars. And so, yeah, people that own houses under a million dollars, you're getting a cut on your property tax, which personally, as an individual is great. But what that does result in is for the city Casper, at least it's different all around the state, but for the city of Casper, 1.8 million less in revenue to our general fund. And so for folks that might not know, our general fund is kind of our operational budget. People look at us passing a $200 million budget and they say 1.8 million out of 200, you know, that's, that's tiny. What is that? You know, 1% should be able to absorb that with relative ease. But what most folks don't realize is that that $200 million budget includes a lot of things like our enterprise utility fund accounts, those enterprise accounts that fund our water, streets, or not street, water, sewer, solid waste. That's all money that is sort of self sufficient and operating in its own accounts for those utilities exclusively. We have a capital budget, I think it's around 25 million this fiscal year. So that's removed from this. So really the general fund, which is about $50 million, that's our daily, you know, operational budget. That's what we use to pay our staff, pay for cost of materials. That's the general day to day operations of the city, that $50 million. And so the 1.8 million out of that, you know, ends up being, I think it's three or four percent. And so you absolutely have to make sacrifices. And so we've done, you know, what we could to minimize the impact or minimize how the, the pain to the community with those cuts. We decided to reduce seasonal park staff by seven positions. We're reducing some irrigation at parks just because especially in these drought like conditions we've had for, you know, we used to get a lot more moisture around here. Man, it feels, it feels like we've been living in drought for a decade. And so I know this year I've just let my front yard just go. I mean, it just requires way too much time on my effort to keep the water on it and the cost of the water, you know, it's just, yeah, it sucks living in a drought, trying to keep a fresh turf out there. And so we did those, I saw the Ford Wyoming Center, you know, at this point, obviously didn't do the fireworks festival. They did have some bathrooms up there. I think it went well. I haven't heard otherwise, but I know that was an issue. And then the holiday tree lighting, that was something that started in the 1990s. The Holiday Square tree lighting at Conwell Park started in the late nineties. Originally, I believe it was just a banner or at the time Wyoming Medical Center initiative. It was 11 trees hooked up to a generator, but last year we had, I believe it was 60 trees, multiple different, you know, nativity scene, flashing tree animations. Usually there's Santa, there's hot cocoa, it's a big deal. And I love going to it with my family, but that's one of those areas where, you know, it, it is a luxury. It's not potholes in the streets. It's not a police department, you know, officers in uniform. It's not what I would consider core government services, especially since when it started 30 years ago, 20 years ago. It was entirely supported and organized by the private, you know, by private interests. The city, my understanding is had very, very minimal, if at all involvement in it, but over time, things change. And so now last year, we got into a place where we had 60 trees, five times more than there was originally, a bunch of different displays and, you know, all these different components to it. And it was costing the city a lot of money. And so with these property tax reductions, we had to find areas in the general fund where we could cut back and that was one area, we're still preserving it. There's still going to be 30 trees lit this year, which is again, three times more than it was its first year, but significantly less than people are used to seeing these past few years. And it's a bummer because I live for Christmas, my, my family and I, Christmas is our time of the year. Definitely the most wonderful time of the year for us. And so we love that, but it is what it is. You got to make those hard choices.
Yep. And somebody's going to be out there complaining.
Sure. Yeah. There, I'm, you know, there's this, sometimes a commentary or this perspective that you can make cuts that nobody will complain about. That doesn't exist. I've been on council long enough to know that there is not any decision we could make, especially in the way of cuts to services. You're going to upset someone. So the goal is how do you upset as few people as possible? That's really the task that we're given, this, this narrative that you can make cuts that people won't feel or see or otherwise become aware of. That's, that doesn't exist. That's unrealistic. That, that is not an option in my opinion.
First, first, we're not using the same budget as on the federal government and people make that, you know, that comparison all the time is like, it's the same as the federal government.
Yeah.
We're not at all in the same playing field.
Not even close.
And there's a lot of things I need, like we were talking about last, on one of the last podcasts, a lot of things that need to be, you know, a lot of catching up to do in terms of the state of certain buildings, the state of certain roads, the state of certain sidewalks. I mean, I know in our neighborhood, all of the sidewalks need to be redone. So there, and it's maybe not as priority as something else, but it's sooner or later, it's going to have to be, have to be done. So reduction is, is much easier said than done, but everyone else, everyone has, has the best idea out there.
For sure. And it's wild to me when I see, you know, I don't think it's called the big beautiful bill anymore. Is it called the act? I think President Trump's bill they just passed. It's wild for me to see the reception from some people that give us grief about the decisions we make on a local level in support of something like that. I think it's like five trillion added over the course of the next 10 years. That's wild to me because on the city level, we are mandated by the state to pass a balanced budget. We cannot pass a budget that would require us to spend more than we expect to take in. And in fact, we are very conservative in the sense that not only has Carter and our city staff been very conservative in their projections of sales tax revenues. We almost always end up with a good, healthy buffer because we're not, you know, trying to make our budget easier to work with by, you know, inflating those projections. So we're, we always got conservative projections, but also our capital budget, all of our street construction, our police and fire fleet purchases, all of our big capital construction projects and equipment purchases are cash based. Meaning we already have the money on hand to pull the trigger. Our one cent that we collect, we wait a year, there's a year lag time from when those taxes are collected to when we're spending them. So we have cash on hand to pay. So that's how we operate at the city level. So again, it's wild to see people give us grief at the city and then support something on the federal side where they're increasing spending and reducing revenues. And I'm like, that's wild, man, because we get raked over the coals for what we do and it's very, very conservative. I can't imagine us passing a budget that would require us to spend more than we expect to receive. That's, that's just a totally foreign concept to me.
And we complain about our national debt, you know, we complain about how it's increasing.
35 trillion or something, some absurd thing.
It's just crazy number.
We leverage debt on the city level occasionally in the case where, you know, I'm, I'm financial literacy and stuff, it's not my strongest suit. But there are cases where if you can get a low interest loan from the state offers, or at least historically, maybe not so much these days, but historically had offered very low interest loans. And so sometimes it makes sense to leverage debt to take a loan out at that very low interest rate and pay it out over the course of time. Because the money that you keep in your pocket, you can generate more in interest revenues, you know? So there's cases like that where it makes sense to leverage debt, but otherwise, yeah, we do not take on projects that we don't, you know, the police department is a great example, something we get grief about occasionally. We have 25 million budgeted for that and I see often when we find a specialist or something, people thinking like, oh, here they are, they're just digging themselves a money pit. Now, we still only have 25 million budgeted for it.
Right.
And we have to do some value engineering because the cost of construction just continually goes up unfortunately, and we got to phase out the project. But it's not just something where we're just dumping money into that, you know, we don't know where it's coming from or we're, our former mayor, Steve Cathy would always say betting on the come. So, you know, we're never betting on the come or expending money that we hope to generate back. We're, if we're spending money on a big capital purchase like the police department, we already have that money in hand. We are not speculating in the future.
There's not a printing press, currency in the basement.
Unfortunately, we don't have that luxury to just make new money. Yeah.
Right, right.
Unfortunately not.
I think that'd be very utopic and wonderful if, if the federal government would work, work like city governments.
Imagine they had a balanced budget with a cash based capital that, yeah, I mean, that's totally utopian. I don't see that ever happening. But imagine, right, what kind of scenario, you know, what situation we'd be in as a country if that were the case, a lot better.
Absolutely. We should, we should take some pointers from Argentina. They, they recently balanced their budget and so. So when does the property reduction start? When does it roll out for taxpayers?
So my understanding is it, it's this year, I think it, oh man, did it take effect in April? Usually legislation takes, you know, starts on July 1st, but I think property tax for one or another, maybe it started in April. But yeah, so there's been a property tax cap in place. You shouldn't have been paying more than 4% increase the past couple of years. But the 25% tax cut, I believe it's this year, should be taking effect. So that's just one component of it though. I'm glad you came back to it because yes, the 25% cut resulting from the legislative activity this last year is 1.8 million in reduced revenues for the city Casper this year. However, next year, there were enough signatures signed on a citizen petition to get it on the ballot next year for another 50% property tax cut. So that will be on the ballot next November and that's something that I think our community and every community, well, no, I guess it's just, yeah, it's every community because it was a statewide petition. So every community is going to have to give that some thought and serious consideration because, you know, my guess, you could ballpark it if 25% was 1.8 million. It's going to be another couple of million in reduced revenues. And if people are already upset with the parks looking a little bit more yellow and tree lighting being pared back by a few trees, they're really not going to like to see what those options look like in regards to cutting services. If we have to dig that deep on it, and there's some state legislators, I think they've pulled back on it a little bit. But one of our local Neutrona County legislators had brought up the idea of just no property taxes at all. And that to me is a huge, that would be a huge transformation. Property taxes generate, I think it's $3 billion in state revenues. And so in order to try to make up those revenue, you either cut $3 billion, which is, you know, that's absurd. Or you backfill it with something like a sales tax. I don't love sales tax in general because it's a regressive tax that I think disproportionately affects middle and lower class folks. But to make up for that $3 billion in revenue, you would lose by cutting property tax. You'd have to increase the sales tax. I think it was 14%, just an insane number, which I don't think people, I don't think that's a viable alternative, number one. I don't think that's a viable alternative, number one, and number two, it totally cuts the legs out from cities and counties. Having any sort of autonomy over there. The only tools at our disposal is our county and citywide. Um, sales tax, and if we already have a fourteen percent state sales tax, there's no way in hell. City of Casper or Neutrona County is gonna be able to pass a fifteen percent to get the things. Done that we're currently doing with our fifth and our sixth. So it's just, I don't see that as workable at all. Um, I would absolutely be on the record to support that, but even the fifty percent tax, um. You know, uh, I don't wanna tell people to vote one way or another on it, but um, yeah, I mean, you. There's no way to make those cuts and not feel the impact. I'll say that.
Right. They say that um, comparison is the 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 enemy of of growth, um, but. I think it takes sometimes living outside of Wyoming to see how good we have it here.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and you know, when you when you look at, you know, sales tax, our sales tax level is low and there, I mean, I'm not gonna defend either side, but. But it's true that our utility costs are the lowest in the nation. I've lived in three different states and.
And Casper's lower than most cities in Wyoming.
It's just crazy. I mean, I was comparing my utility bills to to some family members in another state and it's like, there's just no comparison. You just, it's not apples to apples. There's just no, it's like, oh, it's a ten percent difference. It's not. It's it's a gigantic difference, you know, what they're paying. And so the question that that a lot of people have when they when they visit here is how how does how does Wyoming survive is a very, you know, maybe easy question, very maybe. Stupid question, but you know, how do how do the roads, you know, even state state roads, highways, how are they, how are they financed when we don't have it? That, you know, compared to Texas and you have these gigantic property tax bills and 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 higher higher sales tax rates. How does how does Wyoming continue to exist and our roads are in better shape than some cities in 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 like in the Dallas area? The 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 thirty-five in the Dallas area is just is a nightmare. Um, and yet they have higher, much higher property taxes and much higher sales tax.
Yeah, uh, well, and they usually have like a corporate and income tax too. We don't have personal income tax.
So how does it work?
Um, no grocery tax. So yeah, we're very lucky here. Um, it works at least on the statewide level because of uh, the energy industry. I mean, historically. Oil, coal and gas have paid, uh, you know, most of our um, the cost to doing business, uh. Severance taxes, mineral royalties. Right now Wyoming, um, I think it's also three billion they have in the permanent mineral trust fund. That the interest generated from those uh reserves funds thirty percent of the state government. So. That's thirty percent of the budget. They don't have to, it just comes to them as interest revenues from this uh. Uh, account that they set up over the course of time where they save money because. People that have lived here for multiple decades, they remember the bust in the eighties and they remember how hard it was to crawl back out of that hole. And so they did their diligence and I agree with them. I think it was smart to do to sock some of that money away. So that in times of economic turmoil, we have a cushion uh to fall back on so that we're not. You know, the bottom's not falling out. We're having to make these huge cuts to, you know, I I was young. I was born in eighty-eight. Um, so I don't remember the.
Very young.
Yeah, very young. But from what I was told in the late eighties when that oil and gas bust occurred. I mean, just tons of storefronts with boards in the windows, families leaving the community in droves. I mean, it sounded really, really painful. It um, Casper did not sound like an amazing place to be living at that time and so. Uh, I'm thankful that those are in place. I'm worried that a lot of our especially newer legislators. Don't seem to appreciate the value of reserves for a state like us that does rely on a volatile. Um, industry to fund the majority of our services. Uh, you know, we uh. We've been targeted recently about the reserves that we hold as a city and uh. Just very strange to me cuz the majority of our reserves are what I consider uh, best practice personally, but also what the. Uh, Government Accountability Office considers best practice uh institutionally and that's things like our general fund. We have a four month operating reserve, a hundred and twenty days. So if our revenue stream stopped, we received zero money. We still have enough in the bank to operate the city of government, the city government for four more months. Our enterprise utility fund accounts, water, sewer, solid waste, landfill, three months, ninety days. And so if those revenues for some reason. Just stopped, we would be able to operate those for ninety days, which is helpful in the case um, folks might remember after covid hit. Uh, nobody was out doing anything. There was no commercial activity. Everyone was staying home and they were all landscaping. They were all doing yard work. And going up to uh, get waste to, you know, uh, depose of their uh waste up at the landfill. But most people don't realize the dynamics between the bail fill fund and the solid waste fund. Uh, the commercial activity at the bail fill essentially subsidizes our ability as residents to. Um, uh, throw our trash away at the landfill. And so without all that commercial activity, those. Uh, funds were turning totally upside down because we didn't have that commercial activity. Acting as a buffer and a subsidy for everyone, myself included. Having a bunch of time on their hands, not being able to go anywhere, just sit at home and work on their yard. Um, and so. Uh, yeah, I find it strange that we're getting targeted for being responsible in the sense of holding reserves. Um, making sure that we can perform the day to day operations of our uh government if uh, things were to turn south real quick. Uh, we do have, like the state's permanent mineral trust fund, we have what's called the perpetual care fund with a corpus of about thirty million dollars in it. It generates, I think it's one point two million in interest revenues every year. And so that's really the only true. Blue like reserve I can think of that the city has. And there are some folks that, you know, would like us to. Use that money to, you know, um, they've pointed that and said, hey, this one point eight million in property tax reductions. You got thirty million in the bank. Why you, why you complaining? Why you whining? You got thirty million dollars there, just use it. I would push back on that because that thirty million dollars is a one time revenue source. Um.
Right.
You can backfill our reduction in uh, property taxes this year at one point eight million. We can do it again next year. We can do it for for me, for a few more years. But all you're doing is kicking that can down the road.
Right.
You are using one time monies for recurring expenses. The GAO, the Government Accountability Office. Strong recommendation against because that is building in a structural deficit to your budget. You're kicking the can down the road. I would be making a city council twenty years from now. I'd be passing the buck to them and saying, hey, we got this one time revenue pot. We're gonna use it to get. Ourselves out of trouble right now and you're gonna have to figure it out twenty years later. And in addition to that, now you don't have that thirty million dollars in the bank that's generating one point two million annually. So now you have even less revenue. So you got less revenue, uh, and we've just kicked the problem, you know, twenty years down the road. That's irresponsible in my opinion and uh, that's why. Short term.
It's short term thinking. It's not even twenty years. I mean.
Yeah, not even twenty.
It's, you know, two million a year, you know, it's, you know, fourteen, fifteen.
Fifteen years, it's gone.
It's gone and 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 that is, you know, a lot, a lot of people think like that. They think like, you know, what what can we use today and and not plan ahead for tomorrow? And I think that's, that's, you know, why you have to be at the twenty thousand feet, you know, looking, you know, generationally, what's gonna happen in five, ten, twenty, thirty years down the road and. And then that's why I think it's important um, to 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 use your voice that you have. Are there any other? Projects or things coming up that that you would, that you'd really appreciate people use that, using their voice on and 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 coming down to city council?
Oh, man, I wish I had one locked and loaded for that.
It's a good question, isn't it, Derek?
It's a great question cuz I've uh, cuz we had our meeting, um. What is today? Is today Thursday or is this Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah. So we had our meeting last night.
Okay.
It feels, uh, it was a long one. We didn't get home till like ten PM last night, so uh, yeah, it must just be a little bit blurry. Yeah, um. I'll 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 give it some thought about the ones that I think people should come out, but the one that's on my mind right now is uh, this. Stinking ordinance change that we did regarding snow removal. So.
Right.
There's currently an ordinance in place, twelve dot twenty-four dot oh three oh, I believe. Um, that prohibits sidewalk obstructions. There's probably thirty-five different things listed there. Um, you know, oil, gas, toys, tin cans, uh, weirdly enough, cars, um. Uh, but there's also water, ice and like materials and for some reason, snow is not in there. Uh, it was probably just an oversight whenever they originally created that ordinance and code enforcement in the few times that uh. They've had to cite people for the ordinance are usually able to use that like substance to, you know, qualify the snow. But um, any lawyer will tell you that language typically needs to be real precise. That's how you build the strongest case and stuff. And so all we were doing was. There's thirty different items listed as sidewalk obstructions. We're just sliding snow in there along with water, ice and like materials. To me, that's a super benign trivial. It was just an oversight when that ordinance was, it it will have no tangible impact on anyone. Uh, some folks think that all of a sudden code enforcement's gonna be out there writing tickets to everyone. We have two people in our code enforcement office. Um. They do not have the capacity to come bother you about your couple inches of snow on the sidewalk. Really, it was only needed. To help give code enforcement and PD the tools. Uh, we have some commercial property owners in town that. Like to take their parking lot snow and pile it all up on a city sidewalk or a street uh, in the public right of way. And so really. It just needed to be in place to address those really egregious examples of people really disrupting the public right of ways with their. Uh, snow removal efforts. It's not to give our code enforcement the authority to go harass every single person that. Doesn't get out there in the middle of a snowstorm and keep their sidewalks cleared. It's just like the um, last year when we added. The prohibition of feeding turkeys and squirrels. Same thing. People thought code enforcement was gonna be peeking over your backyard fences, trying to catch you. You know, feeding a squirrel or anytime your squirrel, and anytime a squirrel got into your bird feeder, you were gonna get a citation. It's been long enough. I think that was like eighteen months ago now at this point. I haven't heard any stories of uh, that occurring. And I can almost guarantee it hasn't happened because again, at the moment, we got two people in our code enforcement office. They do not. They do not even have the capacity to address those most egregious examples, let alone be peeking over people's fences and stuff. So. That's an example of what I would consider something that um, we just finished the third public reading last night, so thankfully I won't have to. Look at it again, but for th- three weeks, every time that came up for a public reading, hundreds of comments, tons of community engagement. Um, that I thought was a lot of just misinformation, a lot of overreactivity. And so I guess that frustrates me because to me that was a very trivial benign, uh, that was just a little bit of ordinance cleanup. Very unimportant. That generated way more community feedback and engagement and discussion than. Some of the other things that I consider vastly more important, you know.
Right.
Let's say my, the Parks Master Plan, for instance.
Right.
That's a document that we did a ton of public forums and uh solicited a ton of public input for because that is a document that's gonna guide. Our capital construction related to parks over the next twenty years. So critical document. I mean, it's guiding. Our park plans for the next couple of decades. It's it's crucially important. It's a, it's one of the like the biggest things that we've uh. Um, considered uh during my time on council and you gotta beg, plead and. Bribe people to show up to those public town halls and stuff. It feels like, it just feels like we could not get anyone's input on something like that, but then. You know, we're adding snow uh, to a a existing ordinance, changing nothing and everyone's got something to say about that. So it does get frustrating. I wish. Um, people were as passionate about the things that I think are important, like the Parks Master Plan, as uh. They are about the things that I consider very unimportant and uh, you know, not a big deal in our community.
People, people really think the world revolves around them. Like they're gonna be feeding the squirrel and then they're gonna be like the Gestapo or someone's gonna show up.
Yeah, I, it's, it's wild, um, how people think those those little ordinance tweaks are gonna drastically change the way our code enforcement does their business.
Right.
It's just like.
And there probably are people that push push their snow into the into the street or the people that don't, and there's, it can become a safety hazard, but. You know, in my neighborhood and and I have to go through several, you know, I live, you know, um, off of Ridge Crest and.
Yeah.
Um, I have gonna go through through several streets to get to to Wyoming Boulevard or whatever. No one does that. No, no one, I don't, I don't think it's in in all those streets that I go through, no, no one is intentionally creating a a safety hazard. So I don't, I don't think I live, you know, there there are people probably, you know, causing safety issues, but it's it's not, that obviously isn't. Doesn't seem like it's a a as a big of a deal as as they say it is.
It's not. And even me, I knowing how strapped our code enforcement office, knowing how understaffed they are. I don't call in every sign, you know, I don't call in every violation. Every time I see weeds more than eight inches or. Um, I have ran across people snow blowing into the street and I don't call that in, but I'll stop and try to shame them a little bit, especially since the times I've stopped. They have a snow blower. And so I get it if you're older, uh, you know, I have some chronic health conditions that. I purchased, I got a snow blower a couple of years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, amazing, um, I'm super thankful for it, but I held out for as long as possible. And there was that big snow, I think it was three years ago.
Right.
I mean, it just dumped. I mean, we got like three feet in two days and even me, uh, thirty, you know, mid thirties, uh, man. Had a hard time. My snow was piled up so high, it was hard for me to get it up. And so in those cases, yeah, I, any reasonable person will understand that. But if you have a snow blower and you can put it wherever you want it, why the hell are you putting it in the middle of the street, man? Put it on, put it in your yard, like what are you doing?
Yeah, and we need the humidity and the the moisture in the grass. So put on the grass.
So that just doesn't make, I won't call it in, but I'll stop and shame them a little bit and just remind them like, hey. Your grass will like it a lot more and your neighbors will not hate having to drive through this slurry that you're creating in the street that was plowed last night.
Right, right. And it's just common sense as well too. I mean, it's.
Good thing.
Cuz I had a, uh, during that 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 winter season, I had a, we had a five, five foot uh, snow drift in our driveway. So you had to put it someplace.
Yeah.
You know, and if it wasn't for a snow blower, a friend's snow blower blower, then we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't have been able to get out of our garage.
Yeah, sure.
So, but you gotta put it someplace.
Yep.
So, um, so when, when are the city council meetings? Can you just remind us when people can show up and and voice their opinions and, you know, either if. Either in person or online?
Yeah, if they wanna voice their opinions, it needs to be at one of our regular meetings. It's the first and third Tuesday of every month. Public comment. Uh, we have a pre-meeting that starts at five thirty. Our meetings start at six PM. We do uh, usually um. Uh, pledge of allegiance, some introduction stuff, maybe a proclamation or two, and then public comment usually starts right around six fifteen. If you wanna speak to us though, I'd recommend you show up at least at. Six. Um, so that's the best time to catch us in person. You're welcome to show up to our work sessions. Those are, those are the second and fourth Tuesdays. They're mostly just homework and information gathering sessions and stuff, no public comment period, but you're welcome to come show up and uh, observe. And so, yeah, those are the best opportunities and then obviously email, uh, phone, those are all published on the city website, so feel free to reach out in those areas. And then all the the town halls, the public forums, those are the ones I really want people uh, to get in. And uh, I would encourage people to follow the City of Casper Facebook page cuz they post all those opportunities there.
Got it. Okay. Well, you have an open mic in front of you. What's one thing you'd like to to share with the City of Casper?
Oh geez, one thing, that's.
Just one thing.
Just one.
Just one.
Oh, man, I don't know. Um, I mean, really just, uh, I'd encourage folks to get engaged however you feel. Uh, best equipped, uh, whether that's just giving us a phone call or an email to let us sure. So last night at city council. Um, was kind of out of character and I was really appreciative to see, we were discussing, um, it was Hogodon. So that's uh, obviously the six cent uh, proposal for the new quad lift at Hogodon failed. Uh, it was one of four proposals that did not pass this last election and so. And so, um, uh, Zulema Lopez, our uh, park and public utility or public facility director. Is still trying to come up with a way to recover as much costs, you know, our cost recovery goal for Hogodon is sixty-five percent. So the goal. Is to try to recover sixty per sixty-five percent of the cost of providing that service and uh, we're not quite there yet. Um, and so we discussed options last night about how do we get there. Uh, part of it is just increasing. Uh, the rates, which have to be done every couple of years just cuz the cost of doing business goes up. So we just gotta kinda keep in line with inflation in that regard. But also, all the user groups, at least all the ones I've talked to and that have uh, shown up and talked to us in council and stuff, they will all tell you. That the success of Hogodon hinges on a new lift, like the the lift that's up there is ancient and if it goes down in the middle of a season. That's, that's no good. You have all these season pass holders that their season's cut in half and are you giving returns and. Uh, it'll just totally ruin the economics of uh, uh, the ski resort up there. And so. Last night we discussed a facility fee, ten percent util, um, ten percent facility fee that would go on every day ticket and season pass. Uh, to help fund, it 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 will not be able to fund the whole cost of the qua- I think it's a four to five million dollar expenditure. And uh, the rate increases and the ten percent facility fee on top is expected to generate, I think it's a co- a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, so. Not even close to the four or five million needed to replace it, but it's enough that we could leverage it. To pull in other grants or potentially take out those low interest loans or, um, you know. It'll provide us some seed money to start exploring other options to get that quad lift in place because without it. Uh, the subsidy at Hogodon will only increase over time and obviously the goal is to decrease it over time. And so. Um, that's gonna be tough for people that use a ski resort this year. They're gonna see a, you know, pretty significant hike in those. The cost of those tickets and stuff and that is really unfortunate and I wish it was avoidable, but. Uh, on the other hand, I also do feel like the people that are using the facility. Need to put more skin in the game than the people that aren't. And uh, so anyways, where I was going with that was last night at our meeting, we had. Um, Joe Nicholson, I think is his name. I believe he's the director of Casper Mountain Racers. He came and spoke. Bill Degrave and Nick McNamee, um, I believe they're both with Casper Mountain Ski Patrol.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, I know Bill is, uh, but they're also part of a local task force. Um, really cool to see, just a citizen task force. They came together and. I don't know how often they meet or whatever, but citizens coming together, forming their own task force, kind of removed from the city, just to try to figure out, how do we get the lift at Hogodon? And so they all um, came and spoke in support of the fee increases and stuff and they're users. Uh, but even they, you know, they recognize and acknowledge the need for the lift up there. They recognize and acknowledge the fact that they spend a lot of time up there. So they, the burden of uh, you know, getting that lift should fall more on their shoulders than other people who have never been up to the slopes. And so. It was cool to hear from people in support of. And other people who have never been up to the slopes. And so it was cool to hear from people in support of something that. On its face should be a pretty unpopular, you know, not great thing. Uh, but they came and spoke in support of it. And knew it was gonna cost some pain for them anyways, but they see the value of it and they came and spoke in support unsolicited. And that just doesn't happen very often. So it was cool to see, uh, you know, obviously it's easier to accept feedback that is positive over negative. Uh, you know, if you ask me, I would love to receive strictly positive feedback and no negative, but that's the, you know, that's not the nature of the job. And people are more highly motivated to reach out if they're frustrated with something and it's causing them a lot of grief in their life as opposed to. You know, it's easier to complain about your food, uh, to the server when it's really bad. Uh, mo- you know, it's harder for people to think of, hey, pass along to your manager or your, uh, chefs. That was a great meal. Um, and so, yeah, I would just encourage people to reach out because it does make a difference. Uh, we certainly were way more informed as a group, uh, on council last night after hearing from those people. Cause they have the expertise, the knowledge, they're up on the slopes multiple days a week. I haven't been for a couple of years. And so I see the spreadsheets. I know what we're, um, charging for fees and rates and stuff, but I'm not a regular user. And so it really helps to have that feedback from the people that live on the mountain. Um, uh, I just feel a lot more informed when I have that opportunity to chat with those people. So please, especially if it's a. An area where you feel like you have significant knowledge or expertise to share.
Mm-hmm.
Let us share, I mean, share it with us. Let us know. Uh, let us tap into that. Because us nine people, we're, we have limited perspectives and experiences. And, you know, I think we're pretty well-rounded as a group, but there's always.
Right.
Um, areas where we're missing. I, I, um, uh, Steve Cathy, who's not on council this year, he had termed out last year and didn't run again. Um, we disagreed on plenty of things, but he brought a tremendous wealth of information to the table. He, he's worked in oil and gas his whole life and he's done a lot of construction. And I've never built a building. I've never worked in oil and gas. And so I miss having his perspective on those items. Uh, as a part of our group, we've not filled that vacuum. And so, you know, areas like that where we just, nobody in our, on our council works in those industries or has much experience in those fields. Those are the people we need to hear from to make sure we're making informed, good decisions.
Right.
Yep.
That's an excellent example of what works. So Kyle, thank you very much for joining us. Thank you for, uh, taking your, taking time out of your busy, busy week. Especially this, this week. Apparently it's your busy week.
Yeah, no worries.
Appreciate it. And we'll see you here in a, probably another, another couple of months.
Yeah, I hope so.
Get a, the latest on what's happening. So.
Love it.
All right. Awesome. Thanks.
Thanks, Eric.